Howdy, everyone. Thank you for being here tonight. Today is Tuesday, September 27th, 2022, and I need to wish my sister a happy birthday. The time is 7:00 PM. We're here for the regular session of the Coppell City Council. We do have a quorum present, so I'm going to call the meeting to order. We're convening into work session in the first-floor conference room, and the public is invited and welcome to join us. Thank you very much.
I've only gone for a week, so it's kind of been really crazy. Business class, yeah. Thankfully, I can sleep. But I have to fly from Chicago. And then with my teammates, I'll fly from Chicago direct. I want to say it starts with a G where I'm going, but I don't know. I'll let you know.
The time is 7:02 PM. We're here for the work session of the Coppell City Council. We've got two agenda items. Item A is a discussion of the agenda. Anybody have anything that needs to be discussed or questioned or commented on? Congressman John.
I just wanted someone to go over B and C. Particularly on B with the leak adjustment.
Yeah, that was pretty quiet.
I was asking if someone would go over B and C, but on B, particularly for the leak adjustment.
Leak.
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 I'm sorry.
Did I say leak?
I was hearing, I was hearing weed.
No, leak.
Leak.
Kim?
I'm here, so. How can I help you?
This is... The requirement for the, I guess, the lost water on the customer side, that the criteria to get the, I guess, consideration for the adjustment of the reducing from the leak? Leak?
Yes.
Is that... This is new?
No. The only thing, that leak adjustment is exactly what's been at our ordinance. The only thing we did is remove the sewer portion of the leak adjustment.
Okay.
Because the sewer will be based on history.
Okay.
And so there will be no impact to sewer because of the leak.
Okay.
So that's all it's doing.
So on these type of, I guess, for example, let's say, let's go to a plantation.
Okay.
I know there are a number of people that actually said they had water leaks because of the construction that had tore up the lawn and both the sprinkler system and so on.
So those are handled...
Is it different?
Yeah. So if a contractor caused a leak, the contractor takes care of them.
And that's...
The public works, works with the contractor to take care of them. Because that's a different type of a leak. This is a leak because perhaps their irrigation system leaked or they had a pipe break, and it's on their side. It's their... I don't want to say it's their equipment, and it's something maybe that they didn't take care of. And so this is giving them some grace.
Okay. But in a situation like the construction, they're actually getting care of by the construction and, I guess, the staff?
We don't, we don't get involved with that. I mean, we'll, we'll help them with identifying how much, but public works and the contractor work with the customer to resolve that issue.
And they don't have to submit these?
No.
Okay. Okay. For questions.
Okay. Item C. Atmosphere and committee and atmosphere synergy. Jared?
What questions do you have?
I just wanted you to go over it because I noticed that there isn't an increase, right? For the cost. And I just want to make sure that's noted.
Yes. So the just of it is, we're part of a group, and that consortium basically looks at the request for the re-rate. So ADAS submitted a request, an application for a re-rate. They requested $141 million for lost revenues, basically. That group came back and evaluated and said, "We really only approve $115 million of that." And so what we're doing tonight is approving that re-rate to accommodate the $115 million.
And when would the residency, the increase of this?
October.
Just October?
Correct.
Thank you. I just wanted to get that out so people will know, maybe.
All right. Anything else on the agenda? I have no questions.
You sure?
Thank you for speaking up. We do not have a pastor for the invocation, and I've got something prepared unless someone else has a burning desire. Don, do you have a burning desire?
I am happy to do it. I'm always happy to do it, but if you have something prepared, you go right ahead.
All right. All right. Moving on to item B. This is an update regarding the Denton Central Appraisal District staffing. I wanted to bring everybody up to date. Mayor Prokhem and Matthew and I had a couple of conversations about this starting several months ago, and I don't know exactly when the swirl started, but there were a number of cities in Denton County that were very unhappy with their appraisal district chief. And it was based on that person. And so we had been asked to join in with a number of cities in Denton County to ask for her removal. And I had talked to the city manager, and neither one of us felt that asking for her removal was the correct method. We really needed to go back to the appraisal, the Board of Directors of the CAD and ask them to handle the personnel matter. It would have been overstepping your bounds to go after the person. And so we were actually going to bring that for discussion tonight, but the board in, a couple of weeks ago, the Central Appraisal District Board of Directors replaced their executive director with another person. And so the Denton County, the entities in Denton County are relatively happy with their, with the new interim chief appraiser. His name is Don Spencer. He submitted his budget to the appraisal district, and it was, it's actually being up for consideration tonight, and it is not expected to be, it's expected to pass. And it's, I read through it, and they don't vote on it, so it passes. They can only vote on it to disapprove it. And there is no movement at this point to disapprove it. So there's really no action for us to take. I just wanted to make you guys aware of what had happened, and the outcome was the meeting tonight. There is a, you know, the appraisal district was, was slow to respond to appraisals. A study showed that they were drastically understaffed, and their board has promised to take some actions. So at this point, my opinion is let the board, you know, handle their own matters, and we'll see, you know, hopefully they'll, they'll take some... Well, they already have taken some very concrete action, and it should flow through. The new interim director's already put a plan together, submitted it to the board, and they're very happy with his response. I, that's really all I had. I'd be happy to answer questions, not that I'm an expert in what's going on up in Denton County. We constitute less than 0.5% of their budget. So we're a very, very, very small portion of the, of the CAD budget. Mike said there was not going to be a single question, so.
Now you're going to make sure they ask one, just to do it.
Yeah, that's right. Okay. Anyway. I was, I just, I was very surprised at how influential the mayors in Denton County can be on, on getting things to move. So it was, I was at least able to say that we had it under consideration. We would discuss it, so it took me out of the hot seat. I think, what is our payment to the CAD for the $7,000 or something like that?
It's less than $10, I know.
Yeah. It's a, it's for the services that they provide. It's very, it's a relatively small amount.
Big, 0.5. Would your, would our opinions have affected any of it?
Nope. No. I mean, we, no. We had, we had, we have some skin in the game, but we have no clout. Because we're just so, I mean, we're just a, it's really just a small little neighborhood of the Greens. That's the only area of Coppell that is in Denton County. And so to answer your question, no. We had virtually no, no sway. All right. Well, thank you very much. With that being said, apologize that everybody didn't get the time change tonight, but we did send it out several times, and I, my wife didn't even get it. So it was, I was in trouble at home on that one. I was home too late tonight. All right. There being no further business before the work session. We're at the end at 7:11 PM. We will move into council chambers for the regular session of the city council meeting at 7:30.
And like, some people are just such hardcore fans, they lose their mind.
It was so emotional, you know, or getting her, like, or...
It's very visceral, like, people just...
There must be a proclamation or something, that's why.
People were stopping him, getting autographs. And he was so gracious.
Don's right there. Howdy, everybody.
Howdy, everybody.
Who's talking?
Good evening, everybody. Tonight is September 27th, 2023. The time is 7:30 PM, and we're going to move into the regular session of the Capella City Council. Just as a reminder, any persons wishing to speak during our citizens' appearance must sign the register outside the council chamber and list your address. With that being said, please rise for our invocation followed by our pledge of allegiance. Let us pray. Loving God, give us the grace that we need to learn how to speak the truth with love so that we may build others and grow relationships rather than discouraging and destroying. Teach us to ask when we do not know how or do not understand. You give us the light to show us the path. Teach us to follow that path. Let us trust in your unfailing love and rejoice in your salvation. Let those of us standing before you use your eternal love for the good of this community. Let us not forget that all things come from you; we are just stewards for a short while. So help us all be better stewards of those things that come from you through the love of your Son Jesus Christ. Amen. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please be seated. I'm sorry, I was getting excited about the proclamation, so I apologize for that. Item number five on our agenda is a citizen's appearance. Persons wishing to speak must sign the register and list their residence address. Each speaker must state his or her name and their address. Presentations by individuals shall be limited to two minutes each. An individual's speaker's time may be extended for an additional two minutes with the approval of the majority of the council. Person signed up to speak will be called in the order that they signed up. No personal attacks by any speaker shall be made against any member of the council, the mayor, individual, group, or corporation. There will be no comments or deliberation from the city council due to the rules of the Texas Open Meetings Act. Once the timer sounds at two minutes, the city secretary will cut in and break in and make the request of the mayor and the council if they would like to extend the time to an additional two minutes. We have one person signed up to speak tonight, and that is Ms. Barbara Bailey. Barbara? Thank you for coming tonight. Please state your name and address for the record.
Barbara Bailey, 232 Plantation. I'm here to speak about the curbs that the city installed over on Plantation Drive in the Shadow Ridge subdivision. And I've talked about it before, but I wanted to get you some information, more information about this, the different states and what they say. We have something called returned curbs. They also call them, another term for them is vertical curbs. And the standard installation is a curb, an AVA curb with a flared side. And that way pedestrians and bikes are safer. And this is what Iowa says. This is their rules. For perpendicular curb ramps, sidewalks and configurations where pedestrian circulation crosses through a curb ramp requires the flares along the sides of the ramp. This allows pedestrians to approach the curb ramp from the sides and prevents tripping, which is a hazard. It recommends to the design these flares, and it tells about the slope. They are a tripping hazard, there's no question about that. San Diego, flares on each side of the curbs are required when the ramp above the sidewalk surface area, and that goes into slope. When the ramp adjacent to non-walkable surface such as turf, landscaping, or other areas will not be traversed by pedestrians. We're in suburbia, tons of kids. They're traversed from every direction. And it talks about the slope. The best practice is to design ramp flares to, except where orientation curb ramps are to be designed with flares, this is still San Diego, with flares on both sides of the ramp opening. And this is, unless, vertical curbs, they call them vertical instead of return curbs, shall only be allowed when the ramp abuts obstructions. It cannot be easily or feasibly moved or relocated. And they talk about utility cabins, transformers, manholes.
I'm sorry, but your time is up, Mayor.
Right. Well, I just want to show you one picture, if you don't mind. This is the picture of the obstruction, so you can't cross it. And that's not what we have in Shadow Ridge, and some kids have already gotten hurt. Anyway, I'll be back, I got more. I got two minutes. Bye.
Thank you for your comments tonight. We did have a second person signed up, and that's Ms. Deborah Fisher.
Oh, it's Dorothy Fisher.
Oh, I'm s-
That's all right.
Please state your real name and address for the record.
Dorothy E. Fisher, and I'm on 400 Sandy Knoll Drive in Capella. I might say that when I bought my house in Capella, this is a rural town of about 6,000 souls. There was nothing north of Sandy Lake, we didn't even have a grocery store. There were more horses and cows in town than humans. Most of the humans worked at the airport. So I went in this lovely little rural village, and little did I know, it would grow to be such a world-class city. I stand here in support of the arts in Capella. I'm a member of the Capella Community Corral, as are many of my colleagues here, as well as the orchestra.
Yay, ladies and gentlemen.
And I've heard it said, and I do believe it's true, you can measure the soul of a town by how it treats the arts. And when the city of Capella had the bravery and the leadership to build the phenomenal Capella Arts Center, you made us a world-class town, and you showed we have a tremendous soul, because the arts there flourish like never before, and your children and grandchildren will be proud that you had something to say, something to do with this. So we're very grateful to the city of Capella. We hope we're all in good partnership with each other, and we want to see this continue on forever and ever. So thank you for your leadership and your support and your continued support. I know several of you have been there, I've seen you many times, as I usher there as well. I've helped see some of you. So anything we can do to make it better for you, let us know. And thank you so much for your leadership for the arts in Capella.
Thank you very much for your comments. All right, now we're into the proclamations, so I'm going to come downstairs and invite Officer Kelly Luther and company to come forward, please.
He's a little flunky, I have to help him out.
Let's just make sure we don't need our EMS tonight. Counsel, for your consideration. Whereas the National Association of Town Watch is sponsoring the 38th Annual Edition of an important nationwide crime and drug prevention event on October 4th, 2022, called National Night Out. Whereas the annual National Night Out provides a unique opportunity for Capella to join forces with thousands of other communities across the country in promoting cooperative police and community drug prevention efforts. And whereas the city of Capella is celebrating its 31st anniversary of participating in this great crime prevention program. And whereas it is essential that all citizens of Capella be aware of the importance of crime prevention programs and the impact and their participation can have on reducing crime, drug, and violence in Capella. And whereas police-community partnerships, neighborhood awareness and safety, and cooperation are important themes of the National Night Out program. And whereas the Neighborhood Crime Watch plays a vital part in assisting the Capella Police Department through joint crime prevention efforts in Capella. Now therefore, I West Mays Mayor of the city of Capella do hereby proclaim Tuesday, October 4th, 2022, as National Night Out in the city of Capella, Texas. In witness thereof, I set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Capella to be affixed as 27th day of September, 2022. So, thank you very much. I'm sure that we're going to have a few comments. Kelly, did you have something that you'd like to say first?
I would just thank you for, thank you for this, Mayor.
Thank you, thank you, everyone, for coming, and we're excited about National Night Out. And this guy's ready to party like a rock star.
As long as he has help.
I do want to take just a minute to acknowledge what Kelly, Kelly Luther is our new community services officer. She took over the helm a few months ago. Her and her partner, Kenneth Cochran, were at the Block Hapton, I say "party," but kickoff party before they came over here. She is the machine behind what's going to happen next Tuesday night, and she's done a great job, and I can't wait to see what happens Tuesday night, because we have over 70 block parties set, and in a community this big, that is, that's a huge thing. I told another police chief how many block parties we were going to have, and he about hit the floor. So he had to go back and get on to his people. So anyway, we have a great city, we have a very safe community, and we like to say that it takes a community to keep a community safe. It's not just your police, your fire, and your public works. It takes the whole community. And National Night Out is a part of that, because you get to come out, you get to meet your neighbors, and those relationships mean something, because we got to watch out for each other. This is our community, and we've got to keep it safe together. And it was in the proclamation, I can tell you, we love when the citizens call us when they see something, no matter how small, because we have got to keep ourselves safe. So we look forward to seeing everybody out there, and get out here, council will be with us. Come out and meet your council people, and let's have a great time next Tuesday night.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Kelly. Actually, when I first moved into Capella, the way I met my neighbors was through our first National Night Out, so I'm a big fan. Counsel. Counselmember Brianna Hinosa-Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to go ahead and make a motion before I make a statement, is that okay?
You can do whatever you want.
Awesome. Then I move to approve a proclamation naming National Night Out on Tuesday, October 4th, 2022, providing for city council support and endorsement of National Night Out festivities and authorizing the mayor to sign.
Thank you, and I have a second from Councilmember Carol. All in favor?
Long Hinosa-Smith, Carol Neves, Dunn, Matthew Hill, all in favor, none opposed. The motion carries.
Thank you very much.
And then now I actually have a comment. So I just wanted to say thank you. I didn't realize this was our 31st year, and just realized that my first National Night Out was in 2002, when I was part of CPAC. And have seen it grow so much. I love the competitive spirit, because I think we're always trying to have more and more block parties, but it's not even that. Like, our citizens just come out, our leaders and our officers are always out there, you know, promoting the festivities, and so I really appreciate it. It's fun to go out there, and I know that we try to make as many parties that we can. But, and I love the rivalry sometimes too, between our police and our fire, and to go out there and just support the community. So thank you guys for all that you do, and for just keeping this just a top priority every single year of just making sure that we've got community support and engagement. So thank you.
Thank you. Well, I was a little surprised not to hear about how that we're expecting to repeat our number-one standing in the state of Texas, and...
I thought Chief was saving that for later. That's gonna, it's gonna happen.
No pressure here. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item number seven. Janine, would you please come forward and bring your friends? It's quite all right. I don't know that we've ever had this many people come up before, so thank you very much. Counsel, for your consideration. Whereas the month of October has been recognized as National Arts and Humanities Month by the nation's 120,000 nonprofit arts organizations, the National Endowment for the Arts, and the National Endowment of Humanities. And whereas cities and states, through their local and state agencies, which represent thousands of cultural organizations, have celebrated the value and importance of art and culture in the lives of Americans and the health of thriving communities during the National Arts and Humanities Month for nearly 30 years. Whereas the arts and humanities embody so much of the accumulated wisdom, intellect, and imagination of humankind. And whereas the arts and humanities enhance and enrich the lives of everyone in America. And whereas the arts and humanities play a unique role in the lives of our families, our communities, and our country. And whereas the Capella Arts Center is a gathering place in the Capella community that contributes to the creative growth of our local resident art groups and provides memorable experiences to our community of patrons who pass through the doors to be educated and entertained through the arts. Now therefore, I West Mays Mayor of the city of Capella do hereby proclaim the month of October as National Arts and Humanities Month. In the city of Capella, and call upon our community members to celebrate and promote the arts and culture in our nation, and to specifically encourage greater participation by said community members in taking action for the arts and humanities in Capella. In witness therefore, I've set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Capella to be affixed as 27th day of September, 2022.
First, I'd like to say thank you. Thank you for saying that we can have National Arts and Humanities Month here in the city of Capella. It's an honor to be managing the arts center with all of these local resident art groups, the Art Council, the Art Center Foundation. We could not have an arts center without you. And just as a quick tie-in, every single one of these groups standing here has an event in the month of October, so I encourage everyone to come and celebrate and enjoy these groups, because they work very hard, and they are all volunteers. So they, this is an honor to celebrate for them. That's all I have to say, and you, because you're part of it.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Listen, it's really great to have everybody. Counsel. Councilmember Neves.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to start with a quick comment. My family and I absolutely love getting to enjoy the arts center from, you know, seeing the amazing shows that happen, to actually being called up on stage. I think it was Mike Super got me up there, and I still don't know how he did those tricks, but it was absolutely amazing. The way that you guys enrich not only your own lives, but the lives of the citizens here in Capella is absolutely outstanding, so I want to thank you for that. You make Capella a better place, so thank you for that. With that being said, I move to approve Agenda Item 7, proclaiming and naming the month of October as National Arts and Humanities Month.
Second by Mayor Protem Bijou, Matthew. All in favor?
Long Hinosa-Smith, Carol Neves, Dunn, Matthew Hill, all in favor, none opposed. The motion carries.
Councilmember Hinosa-Smith.
Thank you. I just want to say thank you to each and every one of you. As you know, I mean, the arts is an important part of our community, but I'd like to take a minute right now and just remember Pete Wilson, if you'll allow me. me, just because he had a vision and was a, a huge, left a huge footprint in our community in the arts. And so, I just want to say thank you to him and just take a moment, moment to remember him.
Councilmember Carol.
Thank you, Mayor. I love that both of these proclamations are on the same night because in, in a world that has had conflict since Cain and Abel, you know, years and years ago, things like this, things like the arts and the humanities and National Night Out, these are the things that bring a community together and get us talking to each other. So, I think what all of you do and what so many more people in this, in this community do to promote this type of thing and bring our community together, the Arts Center is a great place for our community to come together. The National Night Out, it is just one night, but I think it is enormously impactful on this community. And so, I think it's great both these proclamations are tonight. So, thank you for everything that you do and everything you contribute to this community.[688.51][688.51](Applause).
Thank you, Mayor. Just want to make a quick comment that you guys all look good up here, but you guys actually look better when you're in the seats throughout the entire meeting. So, I'm encouraging you to stay after the proclamation. So, we'll see you out there.[711.01][711.01](Laughter). It, it, it's going to be a short meeting.
So, I was just informed that we do have Pete Wilson's jacket here back in the back. So, I think the comment was you're not even filling the jacket, much less his shoes.
I can't fill his jacket or his shoes, but I thought his jacket should be here.[730.23][730.23](Applause). Because he did so much to get the Arts Center.
Thank, thank you very much, everybody, and we'll see you at the Arts Center.[740.01][740.01](Laughter). Item number eight, or, excuse me, item number eight is our consent agenda. The consent agenda is routine in nature and generally enacted in one motion. These items have been previously discussed and approved through the budget or past council actions. Any item may be pulled and considered separately. Full descriptions are available and are rolling through the screen. Counsel, do you have any items that you would like to have pulled and voted on separately? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion. Councilmember Hill.
I'd like to make a motion to approve Consent Agenda Items 8A through G.
Second by Councilmember Neves. All in favor?
Long Hinojosa-Smith, Carol Neves, John Matthew Hill, all in favor, none opposed. The motion carries.
Thank you very much. Moving on to item number nine. This is an item to consider approval of ordinance of the City of Capella, amending Ordinance Number 2021-1563, the budget for fiscal year October 1st, 2021 through September 30th, 2022, and authorizing the mayor to sign. Ms. Kean, Kean, excuse me.
You're fine. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Counsel.
I was trying to get your first name and last name together there, and it just didn't work out too well. Sorry about that.
Thank you. This item is routine in nature, and it's the last official action of the fiscal year 2122 budget. The memo provided in your council packet provided information concerning the changes made to various revenue and expenditures of the funds that were listed in the memo. There are really two overarching reasons for this amendment. The first is to amend sales tax. And it's amending sales tax for the General Fund, Crime Control Prevention District, Capella Recreation Development Corporation, and then the Infrastructure Maintenance Fund, which are the four funds that receive sales tax. The second reason for the amendment is to reflect the closing of purchase orders that were brought into fiscal year '22 through the encoverance carryover method, process. And when those POs that are associated with that prior year, encoverance carryover, when those are closed, it reduces the budget. And so, we're just reflecting basically paperwork to get the, the ordinance and the approved budget to reflect what's in the system. And those are the two primary reasons presented in your memo. And if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Counsel, any questions for Ms. Kean? Councilmember Carol.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, he can, I guess. One question. So, on the sales tax holding fund we budgeted, we're moving the money out because this is the money that's, we don't have to earmark anymore, correct? So, is it, where is it going, I guess? Is it going just to the unrestricted fund balance or?
So, it would flow into undesignedated unless counsel decides to assign it to a particular project.
Okay. So, it just comes out of this fund? Okay. All right. Thanks.
Counsel, any other questions? I'll entertain a motion if not. Councilmember Neves.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve, sorry, I move to approve Agenda Item 9.
Thank you. Do I have a second by Councilmember Carol? All in favor?
Long Hinojosa-Smith, Carol Neves, John Matthew Hill, all in favor, none opposed. The motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Item number 10 is the City Manager's Report, Project Updates and Future Agendas.
Thank you, Mayor. This evening, just a couple of items. As we mentioned a couple of weeks ago, the switch of traffic for Beltline, South Beltline is anticipated to occur at the end of October. The intersection improvements for Bethel School are expected to be completed by mid-October. The Highway 121, Dent and Tap, excuse me, Dent and Tap intersection, turn lane is also expected to be completed by the end of October. One of the reasons why there, you may not be seeing some work going on right now is there was a electric meter that was out there that was actually owned by the NTTA, and it shouldn't have been. So, we had to get that all fixed and arranged. Today, the second ARPA tranche was received. That amount was $5,141,912. And we were notified by the contractor for the cricket field that they should start work in early November. So, that's what's going on there. Mayor, that's all I have.
Thank you very much. Item number 11 is Mayor and Council Reports. If you would like to be involved with your community and make a difference, then please apply to be on one of the city's boards and commissions. Learn more about open positions at capelltx.gov/boards. The applications for these will be open through October 7th. Please check your voter registration. The last day to register for the November election is Tuesday, October 11th. That's two weeks from today. Visit capelltx.gov/election for more information about the upcoming election to check your status and get registered to vote in our community. The City of Capella will hold a special election to consider two propositions. The first is whether or not to consider a one, to continue a 1/4 of 1% sales and use tax for the maintenance and repair of municipal streets for a four-year period. And the second is to whether or not to continue a 1/4 of 1% sales and use tax for crime reduction programs for a 10-year period. Early voting begins on October 24th. And again, visit capelltx.gov/election for more information. If you're looking to find a new-to-you Halloween costume, come over to the Costume Swap and trade in your gently-used costume for a different one. If you donated one to the Halloween Costume Drive, bring your ticket and choose a new one. You must donate a costume in order to take one. Gently-used costumes can be brought the day of the event on October 1st from 2:00 to 3:00 p.m. at the Cosby Library. It's a festival of color, culture, and music kaleidoscope, which is a celebration of art and cultures, will be returning to Andy Brown Park East on Saturday, October 8th from 11 to 3:00 p.m., 11 a.m., excuse me, to 3:00 p.m. This year's daytime event will feature a variety of activities, performance, and artisan vendors to appeal for everyone. For taste around the world, a diverse array of lunch options will be available to purchase from food vendors. And lastly, this past weekend, we did have a music in the park, and it was really reassuring to see the parents leaving, letting their children run basically untethered. It just made a testament to the, the safety of our community and how our citizens feel about living here. So, it was really rewarding to see the, the kids acting as kids. It was a, it was a great time. Item number 12 is Council Committee Reports Concerning Items of Community Involvement with No Council Action or Deliberation Permitted. Item A is a report on the North Central Texas Council of Governments. Councilmember Brianna Hinojosa-Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. I actually don't have anything for A, but for B, on the North Texas Commission, just a couple of things. One was, in our last meeting, there was a recognition for our very own former Mayor Karen Hunt for her outstanding service as NTC Board Chair, as there was a new chair that came into office. And then there was also a lot of conversation around the 88th Legislative Priorities for North Texas around education, workforce, business competitiveness, local government, and infrastructure. There's a whole list of, of those, of what the NTC is supporting, and there, there was discussion for that. So, that's all I have to report.
Thank you mu, thank you much. Moving on to C, Report on the Historical Society by Councilmember Cliff Long.
Thank you, Mayor. In addition to stocking the Minyard Store in anticipation of the grand reopening and continued work on converting the Heritage Park to a Registered State of Texas Museum, the society members have been busy planning Pioneer Day, their first day of celebration for the fall holiday season. Pioneer Day will be held Saturday, October 15th, from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. in Heritage Park. In Heritage, a lot of people don't know where Heritage Park is. It is at where South Capella Road intersects Bethel Road on the south side. So, that ought to give everyone a good idea as to where the park is. The day is designated to be a walk through Capella history. Entering through the parking lot on South Capella Road, guests will view four phases of early Capella life and experience craft and skills activities related to each phase. All ages can experience activities such as whittling, writing with a quill pen. You know, this, this is tough for me since I did some of these things (Laughter) when I was a kid. Making bead bracelets, helping make butter and bread, and making scarecrow tiles for home gardens. Since the society did not obtain a food permit, there will be no eating of the bread and butter. A big hit for the kids will be a live petting farm that, that accompanies the forming theme. There will be wagon rides, free snow cones, and computer stations available for those interested in investigating their ancestry. Another big hit, sure to be there, is the grand opening of the Minyard Grocery Store, Museum, and Gift Shop. Amazing vintage items will be for sale. Members of the Minyard's family and former Minyard's employees will be present around 9:30 a.m. on Saturday morning, and that's the 15th, for a formal ribbon cutting to be presided over by Capella's Mayor, the Honorable West Mays.[1504.21][1504.21](Laughter). And one other thing, one addition here, the President of the Society called me between the work session and the regular session tonight and told me that she had just finished a tour of the facilities over there with 37 members of the Dallas Antique Rose Society. So, we're getting more and more interest in the park as time goes by. So, that's my report, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor, very much. Councilmember Hinojosa-Smith.
I'm sorry. I have another, for an item for number 13.
Oh, okay. We're going to move on to item number 13 then.
Thank you very much.
Which is Public Service Announcements Concerning Items of Community Interest with No Council Action or Deliberation Permitted. However, I had a, I had a prior request from Councilmember Neville.
Thank you, Mayor. So, I wanted to let everybody know that the North Texas Food Bank is in the middle of their peanut butter drive, and it is coming to a close here at the end of the month. So, I just wanted to give one final announcement and encouragement to get out there and donate some peanut butter. And just a little background on that, the goal is to raise a half a million pounds of peanut butter or dollars to purchase peanut butter. For those unaware, the annual peanut butter drive began in Plano in 2014. It's a way for the community to get involved while raising awareness of child hunger in North Texas. And each September during Hunger Action Month, cities, companies, organizations, schools, and faith-based organizations come together to collect peanut butter to distribute through the North Texas Food Bank, feeding programs like Food for Kids, the School Backpack Program that feeds up to 11,000 chronically hungry kids each week. In recent years, there's been included a virtual option so participants can make a simple donation, or they can set up their own virtual peanut butter drive and share with friends, family, and colleagues. Information about that can be found at ntfb.org, for North Texas Food Bank. And then I just want to give a special shout-out. There was a peanut butter collection event this past Saturday, September 24th, in the Capella Town Center parking lot. So, that is, you know, I just want to thank everyone who came out and participated with that. And if you'd like to donate actual peanut butter, the closest place to do that would be at Metrocrest Services at 13801 Hutton Drive in Farmer's Branch. So, thank you guys so much. And I also want to thank Councilmember Carol, you know, for us working together on this and spreading awareness about the peanut butter drive. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Councilmember Hinojosa-Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. Mine's really just a, a thank you. I was invited to speak and the mayor joined me, as well as Deputy City Manager Tracy Leach, excuse me, at the Dallas office or field office for the TSA and Homeland Security to celebrate September, which is Hispanic Heritage Month. And we were invited by Alejandro Villarreal, who's a senior federal air marshal. And I just wanted to say thank you. I guess I didn't, I didn't realize what a large organization that we had here for Homeland Security and TSA here in our own city. And a phenomenal building and just setup, and we're hoping to eventually do a tour. But the fact that they took the time to just celebrate Hispanic Heritage Month and to celebrate all those who have served in this, in any branch through TSA, as well as Homeland Security, was just a, a great event. So, just wanted to say thank you to them for doing that. And thank you to the mayor and, and Deputy City Manager Tracy Leach for joining me.
Well, thank you for inviting me. It was very enlightening. And as Councilmember Hinojosa-Smith said, they were a phenomenal group of people. Any other PSAs, Public Service Announcements? Seeing none, we'll move on to item number 14, which is Necessary Action from Executive Session. There was no action necessary. So, we'll move on to item number 15, which, being there no, being, there being no further business before this council, we are adjourned at 8:09 p.m.